Good evening and welcome to the March 13th, 2023 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's City Council Meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's website. So, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway is absent. Councilmember Christiansen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Mayor Ross?
I am here. So, Councilmember Holloway may not be able to join us this evening and so is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Holloway?
So moved.
Second.
This is moved by Councilwoman Walton, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, Councilmember Holloway is excused. Stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilmember Christiansen, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council member, have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Walton, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Alright, so the first item is AB 23-036, reappointment to the Planning Commission. Council is asked to confirm the reappointment of Steve Smith to the Planning Commission. Steve has been a Snoqualmie Planning Commissioner since 2017 and he is an active participant and wishes to continue his service to the city. Council may have a motion to confirm a recommendation to reappoint Steve Smith to Planning Commission.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Councilmember Benson and second by Councilwoman Johnson. Any discussion?
Thank God for people who do this.
Any further? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Nay. So, it's unanimous. Councilmember Steve, or not, so Commissioner Steve Smith will be appointed to Planning Commission and do we know if he is online? Okay, okay, I'm not seeing him online. So, moving on to the next item is is a presentation by Snoqualmie Valley Health on their state of the hospital. So, this evening we had the Chief Executive Officer Renee Jensen who will be joining us.
Hello, good evening everybody. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I have a couple of quick slides just to keep me on track because when I start talking about healthcare and hospitals, I get all excited and I know I have a few, only a few minutes tonight, so I wanted to make sure that we are on point. Okay.
Is Carson bringing those up?
Thank you. So, first and foremost, I have been here as the CEO of the hospital for about two and a half years and I had the honor and privilege of serving this community through COVID and helping to deliver over 35,000 COVID vaccines to this community and beyond, as well as thousands and thousands of COVID tests as well. And I think that the hospital has been a tremendous asset to this community and not only for the community health and the population wellness, but also for employment, jobs, and economic development. And so, we're continuing that theme, not just, we have COVID, we use it as a blessing to make sure the community knew we were here and to be able to show what this little hospital could do. I always say we're small, but we're mighty. But, we're continuing with that. We also opened an urgent care just a little over a year ago. There was a huge need here for residents to have options and choices for care, not just in an emergency room or primary care settings. But, there's lots of bumps, bruises, stitches, and of course, we have the pass that we serve as well and we have the benefit of treating many skiers and outdoor recreation enthusiasts. So, we continue that this year and we've just recently opened our new medical aesthetics program. And we have, we have a dream to really integrate that with our primary care model and make it not just a standalone, but something that complements the services that you receive in primary care. We've recruited three new behavioral health providers, so we have more availability for behavioral health and mental health options right here in town. We owe you some more because they quickly filled. We, since I've been here, we've also recruited a full-time pediatrician. She is amazing and taking care of the children here in the valley. We've recently added new primary care providers and I don't, spoiler alert, we'll be adding three more this year as well. So, we'll be adding three MD primary care providers to, to the community. So, all of this to say, the hospital is growing and thriving and we are doing a really good job of listening and trying to provide the services that this community needs. But, the hospital has been a very quiet contributor to the community in the past and it's time for it to grow and catch up with the growth of the community around it. And we won't be able to do that unless we get some additional help and support. I don't think a lot of the citizens in Snoqualmie realize that we are a public hospital district. We are a standalone hospital. We are not part of a system. We are not owned and operated by anybody except that a small team of people we have working right here in Snoqualmie. And so, our success or failure is integrated into the success or failure of the community. So, tonight I wanted to share a little bit of information in the few minutes I have about how we are hoping to better serve the community and be a part of the economic development, to be a part of bringing more jobs and making Snoqualmie an appealing place for families to be. So, we are proposing, it was 2008, the last time that the hospital received a tax levy increase. So, a long time ago, a lot has happened since 2008. So, we are trying to increase the levy to kind, to get back to a position where we would be able to do some larger strategic investments in the hospital and the community and the healthcare services. So, we're proposing a levy lid lift. We are currently at 25 cents per thousand. The 2008 levy was 50 cents per thousand. Going to 70 cents per thousand will allow us to expand our emergency department. In the past two years, we've grown from an average volume of five patients a day to pushing almost 20. The emergency room is actually very small. We only have four or five rooms available at any one given time. And it is not unusual for us to have what we call a boarding patient. That's a patient waiting for a bed at another hospital because they're full, or a patient that has mental or behavioral health issues that needs admission to someplace that doesn't have beds. And so, every time we have one or two of those patients, we now only have two or three available rooms. Our hope is that we can continue to provide emergency care here that is quick and that you don't have to wait. You, if you go to other large hospitals in the area, you may wait three, four, I've heard of eight-hour waits recently, especially for non-life-threatening issues. We want you to be able to come in, get your stitches, and be home in time for dinner and have a pleasant experience. We want to make sure that we don't wait until that demand is there. We want to grow and be in front of that to make sure that we can keep those wait times low for you. And, we also have aging equipment. The radiology equipment that's at the hospital now, some of it was moved from the old hospital and it is at end of life. It provides critical life-saving imaging that you may need if you have a stroke or other needs for a CT or an MRI. We do not have mammography, so we really want to add women's health program. We have some amazing women's health providers that we've recruited providing services now, but we don't have mammography local, so people are having to travel for that service. We want to make sure, we do, every two to three years, we do a community health needs assessment and we try to mirror and make sure our services support the needs of, the health needs of this community. One of the biggest needs in this community is care for women and children and women's health. We have actual lower rates of breast screening that, than I think we could have if we had local services. So, by adding mammography, we'd be able to provide convenience for women and they wouldn't have to travel for those appointments. Behavioral health, like I said, we recruited some providers and all of a sudden, they were full. It did not take long, so we need to add more behavioral health providers. We need more long-term careers. We all know that affordability and housing in the Snoqualmie area and valley is difficult, but the hospital provides good family wage jobs and will allow more people to be able to be here. We want to provide additional providers and services and that's, that's a broad statement to say we can grow with this support to be able to provide additional services to our outline areas that we serve. Our, our hospital district is 400 square miles. It's very, very large. It goes all the way to Snoqualmie Pass, all the way to, on 18, to Tiger Pass, all the way through Carnation and includes Preston, Fall City, and North Bend. So, we are very Snoqualmie city-centric right now and we want to be able to provide healthcare services to the outline areas and make sure there is equal access to those that may not be living as close to town. We want to have long-term viability for Snoqualmie. It's interesting, a lot of small hospitals have decided to affiliate and become part of other organizations because they can't survive on their own with just the revenue that they generate from their local communities. And so, their last line of defense is to affiliate and become part of a big system. The challenge with that is that then the local community's voice is lost and the community doesn't have input into the health services that are provided or how the hospital might transform or serve the community. We have an elected Board of Commissioners of five people who live right here in your communities and their voice is loud and clear in the strategic plan and the direction of our organization. I think it's essential for communities like Snoqualmie to have that community voice and that input and help shape the services that we provide. So, by having this tax levy support, it would allow us to remain independent, to continue to have that community-centric approach that we enjoy having in these smaller communities. And then, last but not least, my favorite thing to tell the city is we are, we are great partners for you. Schools and hospitals are integral to ensuring the economic development and the, the healthy part of a growing community. And so, we want to be a part of that. Alright, next slide, please. So, I, since I have limited time, I could talk about all those things forever, but the other thing that I want to tell you about is I know that since 2008, there's been a lot of sensitivity to raising taxes. I know that this community has invested heavily in their schools here and it is a sensitive topic when we talk about raising taxes to support something like a hospital or a library or any other governmental agency. And so, we came up with a really creative way to say, hey, this can be a win-win for the community as well as for the hospital. If this levy passes, we will be able to implement this tax credit program. And how this works is you would bring in your statement that shows the taxes that you have paid to the county and it shows the line item on there and it says hospital. And so, if, for example, you were to pay $500 annually to your property taxes to support the hospital, we would give you $500 credit towards services at the hospital. So, if you used our emergency room, if you used our urgent care, if you needed lab or radiology, whatever that amount was you paid on your bill would become a credit to you and/or your family that lives with you at your address. We are also extending that to our medical aesthetics program that has been wildly popular with some of the residents here. They're very excited about being able to use their tax credit for that. And then, it renews each year, so you can use that credit annually and if you use it this year, then next year, when you pay it again, you can come in and reuse that tax credit again. So, we're excited about this because I think it's a win-win. Not only does it cover the increase, but it covers the current taxes that you're currently paying. So, everybody is already paying a portion of taxes. The tax credit program would cover the full amount that you paid in whole. I, the biggest question I get about the tax credit program is, well, if you're going to credit it back, why do you guys even need it? But, actually, we've done studies and I've, I've had this at other hospitals that I've ran. And what we find is that people that don't use us are like, hey, I've got essentially this gift card and I can use it at the hospital. So, we end up getting new customers and new clients, people that come and use us for the first time because they have this tax credit program. Or, we win the hearts and the trust of the senior citizens who are already having a tough time paying some of those taxes, but they use our services and so now they're even more loyal customers and they continue to come back to us because they have this program available to them. So, this ends up being a win-win for both the hospital and the community. And I, I think it's a great way for you to invest in the hospital and the, the city and the community as, as well. Alright, and then, next slide. And then, we wouldn't be really cool kids in school if we didn't have a QR code, so we provided a QR code for you that will take you directly to our website. We've got all kinds of information there. As we've been reaching out to the community and having these educational forums, we're gathering all those frequently asked questions and putting the answers of the, to those up on this website. So, we're continually updating it and want to invite you to take a look. If you have any questions at all, feel free to contact me directly or anybody on my team. We've had wonderful conversations with community members that have had even some contentious questions, but by the time we get to give them the information and chat with them, we're finding that most community members are very excited about this opportunity and excited to see the hospital investing in the community. So, with that, I would love to entertain any questions you might have.
Council, have any questions? Councilmember Benson?
So, any angry people, we can just send to you?
Absolutely. I'll take them all. Yes, and/or Steve Wright is a new addition to our team. I'm hope, I'm getting him out to meet the community. Steve is our new director for our foundation. The hospital had a foundation once upon a time. It's been very inactive and we have now hired a director. So, as soon as we're done with our community education for the levy, Steve's first job is to get that foundation up and going, but he is really enjoying meeting everybody, including those that have the really tough questions. So, if I can't answer it, Steve sure can.
Any other questions?
Great. Well, thank you guys all so much for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity just to tell you a little bit more about what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, last week, I had the opportunity of attending a press conference where it was Snoqualmie Valley Health and Space Labs signed a deal to work together on new technologies and collaboration on new equipment and it's technologies and new equipment on state-of-the-art, providing state-of-the-art patient care. So, it's nice to have two businesses in Snoqualmie that are working together and collaborating on that, so that it'll help provide even more and better care.
Yes, we're really excited about the partnership with Space Labs. I, we've been under NDA for over a year on that project and basically, we'll be bringing state-of-the-art technologies and becoming a test, a demo site for them for all of their equipment. But, the real, the real heartfelt part of that project is trying to make sure that rural communities and underserved communities and those people that may not have the same access as you would in a large city like Bellevue or Seattle, have the same technology for patient monitoring and the caregivers have the same resources to take care of their patients. And so, we're going to be working with them on how they can really integrate and provide better equal healthcare access to everybody. So, excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Chief Currie, did you have a couple of minutes, couple of comments?
My apologies for not getting here sooner. You know, we have two separate municipal corporations between the city and the hospital district, but there is a direct nexus between our two services and that is the emergency medical system. And EMS makes up about 85% of the incidents that we respond to on a regular basis. And the importance of having the emergency department right at the end of the parkway is so valuable where those stitches types of incidents that she was talking about are the, the minor injuries that we transport. If we can take them to Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, leave them there, we're about an hour closer to getting back in service that much quicker, which eventually and ultimately, if we can go there more frequently, which at times, we go there about 50% of the time. That's how frequently we use it because those are the level of responses that we respond to. It allows us to get back in service that much quicker and could potentially in the long run, prevent us from having to add more staffing because we, instead of having to transport down to Issaquah or Overlake in Bellevue or in Seattle. So, I just wanted to pass it on that there is a direct nexus between the fire department, the city, and the hospital district. And Renee, you're doing a phenomenal job up there. I just want to say, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Okay, moving on, our next, our second presentation this evening is by Waste Management on their annual report. Carson Hornsby has the presentation and we welcome Marcy Manabusen.
Great job. Thank you. Yes, good evening, Mayor Ross, council, staff in the community. My name is Marcy Manabusen. Great job pronouncing that. And I'm a contract manager with Waste Management. I manage the contract that we have with the city of Snoqualmie. I first wanted to just acknowledge that I know you guys passed recently the final two-year extension on our contract and we are just grateful for that partnership and excited to be able to serve the community for another two years. So, thank you for that. Carson, we could go to the next slide. So, you know, part of our contract, we provide the city a report annually of kind of what's going on with WM and what we've been doing in the community. And so, for the last few years, to give that report to you all. And so, that's why I'm here tonight. Excited to see that some of the celebrations coming back in the community. We support the now Snoqualmie Days as well as the Fourth of July celebration by providing services to those events. And I'm excited to, to know that this year, we'll, we'll be fully staffed with our interns that come out and do like education booths and tabling and that kind of thing. And so, we'll be working with the fire department again this year on the pancake breakfast. So, we're excited to be back able to do that. Next slide. When we talk about handling the garbage and recycling and composting, we got to bring up diversion. And so, diversion is just the amount of material that is kept out of the landfill. So, it goes into recycling or, or composting. And you can see the numbers on this slide for commercial customers, multifamily, and residential customers. I think in, just anecdotally, for the communities that I support, that 62% that you see there for residential is higher than I see in other communities. And I think a testament to that is the fact that you, as part of your service, garbage service, you also get recycling and composting. In, in other communities, you know, the composting is a subscription, something you can sign up for. It's optional. But, by having that kind of included, you can see that it makes an impact in diversion. And if you look at the residential pie up there, that number 2,532 is the compost and that's actually larger than even the garbage that's produced in the community. So, really great job to the town for that. Next slide. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our investment in recycling. So, we have a recovery material facility that's located in Woodinville and that's where we bring all of Snoqualmie's recyclables. So, you put all your, your material in your blue bin, we come and pick it up, we take it to Woodinville, we sort it out based on the type of material, plastics, glass, cardboard. And then, we bale that material up and send it out to markets to be turned into new materials. So, that facility has been open since 2003 here in Woodinville and we just closed down in November to undergo a full rebuild of that facility. So, we're putting in a lot of new technology that'll help us increase our capacity of the material that we can handle coming through, through Woodinville. It'll give us cleaner output at the end so that we can get kind of the best pricing and things like that for the material that we're putting back into the market. As the, excuse me, as the facility is closed down right now, we are taking all of Snoqualmie's materials down to our other material recovery facility in Tacoma. It's called JMK. So, we're handling all of that transportation and we expect the new facility, well, the rebuilt facility, to open again this summer. And so, it'd be really exciting to have folks come in and tour and see, you know, all of the new shiny equipment and things like that. So, if anyone is interested in touring the facility when it reopens, let me know. I'd be happy to put that together. When we talk about inclement weather, I know we had some challenges in, in December with some weather events, which always kind of come up. And I just wanted to mention that kind of our process and how we meet every year and review what's required in our contract. You know, our contract dictates our recovery plans and things like that whenever there's a service interruption for weather. And I kind of listed out what's in the contract there. And I just, you know, so that you know kind of our process, you know, safety is definitely the number one priority when we evaluate road conditions and make that call to delay service. It's not something that we want to do because we have to make up that work in the next week or the next day or, you know, when it's safe again. So, we don't take that decision lightly, but we do have, you know, staff that comes out between two and three in the morning to scout the roads, see what, and if we have to, all we do so as early as possible so that we can notify folks. I also put the link to our website in here that, where we post when there are any delays and kind of what the recovery plan is. And so, we update that throughout the day, throughout the week as things change. And then, bear carts, I know, I was here in October, I think, because we had some challenges with supply chain and we were short on inventory a little bit. So, I came in October to get, to update you all on that and I just wanted to update again and reiterate that we do have plenty of inventory for bear carts. As I know, we're starting to hopefully get into spring here pretty soon. Hopefully, we're through the winter. And so, if, if a customer wants a bear cart for garbage or for the compost, you can contact our customer service and we can get that cart out for you guys. Next slide. And the last thing that I wanted to kind of touch on is the new organics management law that was passed as it relates to, you know, kind of our service. I know the city's probably working on a compost procurement ordinance type thing. But, as it relates to the collection services, there are, there's kind of a phased tiered approach to businesses specifically needing to have organics management services. Starting with businesses that generate at least eight cubic yards of organic material a week, need to have some kind of collection service established in January of 2024. What does eight cubic yards of organics look like a week? Probably, you know, many people don't know, don't know or don't realize what that looks like. I'm in the industry. I can kind of visualize it. It's a lot. We'll just say that. So, it's going to be kind of your hospitals or schools, very big generators of, you know, food and, and that kind of thing. And so, our education team is focused, you know, annually, we contact businesses in Snoqualmie to talk about recycling and composting and the options. And so, this is what we're really focused on with businesses this year, is identifying where you fit into this timeline as a business and getting you set up for organic service. So, I kind of wanted to point that out. Snoqualmie is a bit ahead of the curve on the residential side, just because, you know, it's already part of your services. And so, that's something that's coming down the pike in this law 2027. So, I kind of wanted to touch on those couple of things. And I think that's the end of the presentation and I would be happy to take any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Waste Management from Marcy. Councilperson Johnson?
Yeah, on the multifamily waste diversion, it sounds like the commercial might be addressed to some degree by HB 1799, but the multifamily waste diversion was, I think if I remember correctly, an even lower percentage. I was wondering, is there a particular reason why it's the case? Is there anything that we can do to better facilitate diversion from multifamily residences, et cetera?
That's a great question. I think in general, multifamily poses some unique challenges because of the, the diversity in multifamily dwelling units. Some of that is financial and sending, you know, signing up for those services. You know, with resident, with a residential account, you get your, your garbage bin, your recycle bin, and your compost bin all together. But, in a multifamily or business, you have to sign up for those separately. So, sometimes those cost factors come into play with them.
Yeah. So, I guess following up on that then, for the residential units, or I should say, non-m multifamily units, you get the, the green bin and that comes without charge. Is there something similar like that for multifamily units where the, if the property manager wanted to have a big green bin for everyone, can they get that free of charge or is that an additional charge for them? Or, is there some other way that we could address it so that it's at least available to those residents of multifamily housing that would like to take advantage of it?
It is available. It is a subscription service, meaning it is an additional charge if they want to sign up. So, sometimes that's a, a barrier.
Council, any further questions? Right, thank you for your presentation and we're looking forward to working with you again for the next two years.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Alright, next item on the agenda is public comment. So, at this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. And a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. So, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence for the record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council mayor or staff or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded to you. So with this, is there anyone in City Hall or online that would like to make public comments this be, this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, so we have. We have two persons, so we'll start with Robert Angressano. And do you, let's see, what are the instructions on? Okay. So can you unmute Robert? You can have three minutes, you need to state your name. Okay, there you go. And, and please, we can hear you.
Oh, great, thank you. My name is Robert Angressano and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd just like to spend a couple of minutes and just talk about some of the benefits that you recently heard the need to increase the, basically pass the levy on April twenty-fifth. I'm a resident of Fall City, but I've been a volunteer firefighter and E M T for about thirty-two years. And in the last nine years, I've been a volunteer and E M T and medical instructor at Snoqualmie Fire Department. I also work in the emergency room at hospital in Swedish in Issaquah. And so this kind of gives you a bit of a background of perspective that I'm going to talk about. I want to take just a couple of minutes and talk about the importance of expanding our local healthcare system and the benefits it provides the community. A core aspect of primary healthcare is that it operates in the local community and seeks to address all healthcare problems for all people in the community. Strong primary healthcare relies on easy and convenient access to trusted provider or a team of trusted providers. Primary healthcare encompasses the prevention, health promotion and education and support of good healthcare. But most importantly, it needs to be easily accessible at a local level. And I believe that this is the greatest value that Snoqualmie Valley Hospital and all of the surrounding services they provide really benefits our community substantially. You've heard over the last twenty-four months, some of the things that Renee and her team have done. And it's truly been a remarkable job in how she's turned around the hospital and the services offered to our citizens. In the city of Snoqualmie, we're fortunate to have a hospital, medical clinics, advanced medical treatment and mental health services. A successful levy increase will allow Renee and her team to further strengthen and expand these services to better service all residents of the city. I would like to ask for your support in telling your neighbors, your friends, your family members about the importance of continuing to expand our local healthcare services by voting in favor of the levy increase. Thank you very much for your time tonight and thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you, Robert. Next person with their hand up is Louis Washington. Louis, if you can unmute. There you go. So Louis, state your name and city.
Hello, my name is Louis Washington. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm applying for the open, the open city council position number five. I've lived here in Snoqualmie for approximately five years. I've been involved with the E D C as a, the Economic Development Commission as a commissioner. Most recently, working with the Affordable Housing Task Force, chairing the committee and public policy, excuse me, the community and public policy committee. I'm very proud of our community. You know, we have a wonderful community here in Snoqualmie. Some great decisions have been made to move us forward. We're going to continue to make great decisions, moving our community forward. In essence, I'd like to be involved in that conversation. And I just want to thank you very much for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Louis. Is there anyone else who'd like to do public comment? Not seeing anyone in City Hall raise their hands. Nor anyone else online. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. So it considers agenda includes city council meeting minutes of February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting, claims approval report dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, A B twenty-three dash zero two eight, resolution sixteen thirty-eight, awarding per cell painting and coatings for the city hall stairs repair public work contract. A B twenty-three dash zero three three, resolution sixteen thirty-seven, designating the risk manager as the agent to receive claims. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Walton, second by Councilor, Councilmember Johnson. Is there any public comment regarding any item on the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone online raise their hands nor in City Hall. Counsel, do you have any comments, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, see eye.
Eye.
Any opposed, nay? So the motion passes unanimously for the consent agenda, which is approved. Moving on to ordinances, the next item is A B twenty-three dash zero three two, vehicle trespass ordinance twelve seventy-five, hold suspects criminally accountable for their actions by creating a misdemeanor level offense. Counselor Christensen, would you please read the summary?
Sure. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to allow the city of Snoqualmie Police Department by a misdemeanor level offense to hold suspects criminally responsible. This is at this time, the first reading. The second reading would be scheduled for March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this ordinance? If so, please raise your hand. And not seeing anyone online raise their hand or in, in the council chambers. So counsel, I'd like to invite up Captain Brian Lynch to provide an overview. Did you have any additional from the, as being shared that you'd like to state or should we have Brian first?
I can say a couple of words, but Captain Lynch's PowerPoint presentation is great. You know, we're, we're pursuing this basically because we've seen over the last few years, a number of additional incidents that we have not seen in the past with just the sheer volume of stolen cars in the area, as well as cars that have been recovered that were stolen from elsewhere. And unfortunately, as we forward those cases on to King County to be prosecuted, they don't always move forward. And by giving the police the additional option here for vehicle trespass, we give them additional tools to hold people accountable. Whereas otherwise, they just simply would not be held accountable. So I think it's important that we go forward and we have a great PowerPoint presentation. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Mayor. So last Monday, I had the pleasure of coming before the Public Safety Committee and propose a addition to the city of Snoqualmie's code entitled the vehicle trespass. And we spoke about the possibility of needing this to fix some loopholes that our officers are finding on a, on a day-to-day basis. And I wanted to throw out some numbers for you just to see, you know, how bad the problem is with, with auto thefts. As of the end of November in two thousand twenty-two, the state of Washington had lost over forty-one thousand cars. That comes down to a hundred and thirty-two vehicles in the state are stolen every day. There's different reasons for this and I've listed some of them there. In two thousand twenty, when we had the COVID shutdown, jails absolutely would not take anybody for anything that was not a mandatory booking. If it wasn't a violent offense, they just were cited and released or they were, charges were forwarded to prosecutor and eventually they would have to go to court. Maybe not. The two thousand twenty-one police reform laws that prohibited police pursuits of stolen vehicles. And I discussed this last week with the Public Safety Committee about the, the word gets out in the criminal realm of what we can and can't do. And we're seeing an increase in vehicles fleeing from traffic stops, fleeing from, you know, the scenes of crimes. And then when we get behind them, they just take off and there's, there's really no respect for the, the red and blue lights anymore. Criminals are taking advantage of defunded, demoralized and understaffed police departments. And it's, it's not just in King County, it's the statewide with the inability to fill open spots with, with police departments and, and in a timely manner. If we've come to you before and let you know how long it takes when we lose an officer to actually hire somebody and get them back on the road. Those all play into, you know, the amount of crime that's going on and our ability to handle them. And the restrictive filing standards of the King County Prosecutor's Office. Can go to the next slide. You know, the letter of the law for possession of a stolen vehicle only has one element that we have to prove before we can file somebody, file charges against somebody for possessing a stolen vehicle. And that's just be in possession of a stolen vehicle. So when the legislature made this law, that was the only thing that we had to prove. So now in King County specifically, if we can go to the next one, I've put an excerpt, three paragraphs that were, that came back to us on a case that we filed for a possession of stolen vehicle. And you can see in the first paragraph, there's not one, but there's four different elements now that we have to prove in order to file a felony charge of possession of stolen vehicle. And the big one that we have problems with is number two, that the suspect acted with knowledge that the motor vehicle had been stolen. So the King County Prosecutor's Office, if they took every possession of stolen vehicle case, they're so shorthanded and their budgets have been cut like everybody else, they would be overrun with possession of stolen vehicle cases. They put these out there to, to say that we need to prove that the person knew that the car was stolen. And there are a handful each year of cases where we are lucky enough to find somebody in a stolen vehicle and the keys to the car are in the stolen vehicle. Either the victim left their car running in their driveway or at the gas station when they ran in and it was stolen while running and now the bad guy has the keys of the car. That, per the King County Prosecutor's Office, is not knowledge that the car was stolen. We would be unable to prove that, that their story of I borrowed the car from a friend or I just bought this car or anything like that would be true. So we get decline notices like this. And it specifically says that one, three and four, in this case in particular, were, were proven, but we would not be able to prove the knowledge. Therefore, this victim does not get his day in court and their voice was not heard. So the next slide will show you the numbers of the stolen vehicles over the last two years in Snoqualmie and North Bend. And you can see that they are on the rise. While this is still one of the safest cities in King County to live, we are not immune to the rising crime levels and the numbers show it. We are on par percentage-wise with the rest of the state on how many stolen cars are taken. It is increasing. You can see that it's gone up to thirty-one stolen vehicles and then we recovered thirty of them just in the city of Snoqualmie.
Could I just ask a question about?
Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. Just curious, it was one of those extra four in North Bend, the missing one from Snoqualmie? From two thousand twenty-two?
It would be hard to say. So the recovered ones, they're, we recover ones that are taken all over the state. So I'm not really sure, you know, if that would be one particular one that was recovered or not. So yeah, the recovered ones are ones that are put in by, by outside agencies and they end up coming here. Or if we're lucky enough to recover our own, it, it just doesn't happen very often that they stay in the city once they take them.
Okay, so these don't necessarily align with, they were stolen from our city, they're recovered.
No, they could have been stolen from anywhere and, and brought here. Guess we can go to the next slide for me. Now, these numbers here outline the, the numbers of declines. So starting in two thousand eighteen and moving up, you can see that they, they stayed relatively low. But in two thousand twenty-one, we went up to seven of these incidents where there were somebody in a stolen car and we made the arrest and then we forwarded charges to the King County Prosecutor's Office and it was declined. The, the, the months-long backup in, at the King County Filing Unit is evident in the asterisks there. We've had three declined in two thousand twenty-two, but not all of our cases have actually been through the filing unit yet. So we are anticipating that that number will go up and probably show an increase from two thousand twenty-one.
Counsel Benson?
What percentage of these would have been covered by the vehicle trespass ordinance that we're suggesting here?
One hundred percent could have been filed.
So somewhere in the range of all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. These are ones that, when I pulled the numbers and went through these, the, the same decline that I showed you earlier on the earlier slide and the reasons why we couldn't file those charges for proving knowledge, these were, were those cases. It's all the same.
So if this were to happen again, you'd have this ordinance to say, well, then we're going to go ahead and go after them for vehicle trespass?
Yes. Yeah. And this, this particular ordinance would do, would do two things at once for us. It would give us the opportunity to, when we get a decline, we can then file a case of a misdemeanor vehicle trespass into the Issaquah Court. And that person will someday be held accountable. Either they show up for court and they do the right thing or they don't and they get a warrant and we eventually will arrest them and they will have their day in court. Without that, this case goes away. There's nobody that will ever be held accountable for that, for possessing that stolen vehicle. The second thing that it does, if you go to the next one, you can see in the red there, the, the words attempts to enter. Those three words give us a, a whole new crime that we can actually hold somebody accountable for. So a person is guilty of vehicle trespass or he or she knowingly enters or attempts to enter or remain unlawfully in a vehicle that belongs to another. Now, tonight, if somebody is lucky enough to look out their window on the ridge and they see somebody going door to door and trying door handles on cars and we're lucky enough to have them all be locked and the suspect does not gain entry and we get there in time to stop and detain this person, there is no crime that we would be able to, to charge them with. They were attempting to car prowl, they came to the neighborhood to do us harm. But because they didn't get in, it doesn't fit to any of the current ordinances or R C W that we have. So those three words would allow us to arrest that person and hold them, you know, accountable. And like I told you before, criminals talk, the word gets out that you come car prowl or possess a stolen vehicle in, in the city of Snoqualmie and you're going to jail. Flat out. Go to the next one. Okay. So in closing, I did some research and there are several agencies in King County that have come up with ordinances that are similar to this. This particular one is a hybrid between the Issaquah and Auburn city ordinances as well as the city of Renton. And talking to the prosecutors of those cities, Auburn and Renton have had this ordinance on the books since two thousand seventeen and have received zero challenges or loss in court. The reason why that is, is that the elements of the proposed ordinance are in line with a trespass second degree, which is a misdemeanor. And it's not overcharged to be a gross misdemeanor. While, while it's a big jump from a class B felony, which it should be by letter of the law, down to a misdemeanor, it is a tool that by, by all means, the officers need in Snoqualmie. We're on a mission that never ends to try to better our service to the, to our citizens. And I think that over the last couple of years, the victims of crimes have been pushed to the back and they don't have the voice that they once had. This would give us tools to give them a voice on these particular types of cases. And I'm here for any questions that you would have.
Counsel, we have any questions? Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, congratulations on the fairly high recovery rate. I'm not sure if that's actually a good thing since it means that more cars are getting stolen, but it looks like you're finding more, so that's awesome.
Yes.
Two things. Does this, does this ordinance somehow allow for pursuits that otherwise would have been disallowed by whichever RCW it was that was passed last year?
No.
Okay.
It does not fall under a law that we can pursue for.
Okay. Yeah. I just don't want people driving a hundred miles an hour down the parkway. That's my concern there. And then the second thing was, does the vehicle have to be somehow registered as being a stolen vehicle? Or I guess what I'm concerned about is if, say I let, you know, my, my mother drive my car who's not a registered owner, she goes to the grocery store and someone sees her getting in and knows, oh, that's, that, that's Councilmember Johnson's car, calls the police. I mean, you know, she obviously didn't steal the vehicle. So just wondering, you know, what, what's the mechanism there to prevent that sort of situation?
Under those circumstances, a quick and easy investigation would lead us to believe that that person did not steal your vehicle. The ones that we are dealing with are when we pull them over and they're, and for some reason they stop, which is odd these days, being in a stolen car and actually stopping. There are a few that still do it. It's pretty quick that we can know that that person does not belong in that car. They don't know the registered owner's name. They have no paperwork saying that, that it's their car. Their stories just will not jive with, with what we're finding. And if, if the car is stolen and it's entered into, to Owassee and NCIC as stolen, that's probable cause to stop.
Right.
We can do an investigation at that point. What we're finding is though, when, if the keys are in the car, if they don't have a smashed ignition and a flathead screwdriver to start it, you just can't charge them.
Okay. But it doesn't have to have been registered as a stolen vehicle somewhere officially.
No, we can, we can do an investigation and we can, if we think it's stolen after our initial contact, we can send the police departments of that jurisdiction out to make contact with you and say, hey, is this, do you know where your car is?
Thank you.
Is there a priority then on prosecution? So would you submit this to King County first?
Yes.
Just on the car and then if they choose not to prosecute it, then you would take matters in your own hands through this ordinance?
Yes. When we get a decline back from the King County Prosecutor's Office, at that point, we know that there's no hope that that's going to be a felony. And then we can issue a citation into Issaquah Jail for the, or to Issaquah Court for the, for the misdemeanors.
Counsel Watten?
I applaud the police department bringing this forward. I hear from my neighbors all the time about vehicle prowls and I've had that happen to myself, right in front of my house, right behind my house, on camera. And it's frustrating when you can't do anything about it. And this agenda bill addresses that and in the right direction and helps to keep our neighborhoods safe. So safer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So this is the first reading and then we will hear the, at our next council meeting for a vote. Thank you. Public safety or is there any report from public safety committee?
Nothing further.
Is there any report from community development committee?
Just one little thing. I am, I'm sure that a lot of us are familiar with Jason Rogers. He's been with us for quite a while as a senior planner. And he has decided to step down and will be moving on, I believe to Washington State Fairies, I think. Yeah. So that's a wonderful thing for him, but it's quite a loss for us. I certainly remember working with Jason for a couple of years on the planning commission and then over the last year on the city council. Especially his institutional knowledge will be missed and he's just a great guy. But no further report.
Great. Thank you.
I don't recall us okaying that.
That stinks.
Nay.
Seconded.
So moving on, so this Parks and Public Works, the first committee report is AB 23-034, Resolution 1639, Purchase of Centennial Fields All-Inclusive Park Playground Equipment. Counsel Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
Yep.
Quick, where am I? There it is. This agenda bill seeks the approval of a purchase order with landscape structures incorporated for the Centennial Fields Inclusive Park before the selection of the installation and site preparation contractor. Purchasing the equipment directly from the supplier allows the city to confirm the purchase and delivery date of the equipment as well as reduce costs incurred by contractor upcharges from equipment purchase. Adopt Resolution Number 1639, approving a purchase order with landscape structures incorporated for Centennial Fields Inclusive Park Play Equipment.
Assuming that was a motion, second.
So moved by Counsel Benson, seconded by Counsel Johnson. Is there any public comment regarding this item, the pre-purchase of equipment? Not seeing anyone in city hall raise their hands and I'm looking online. And not seeing anyone online raise their hands. Chair, do you want to kick it off? Counsel Benson?
Yeah, this is just to avoid the standard upcharges that you get with any contractor when they purchase stuff for you ahead of time. This is, it seems like a solid way to save some money on this project. And a good plan. It's also, there's also a lead time in receiving the stuff. Director Chambliss, do you want to say anything in, in addition?
Or is it Dylan? Either one, just welcome.
This is, this is Dylan's project. He's been working on it long before Mike was even here. So, but the primary reason we're making this request is there's a long lead time on the equipment. And for, in order for us to receive it and get it in the ground this year, we need to get the order made. It has the added benefit of some cost savings that will be useful as this project is pretty tight on the budget. So. But Dylan's doing all the work.
Did he get that right, Mr. Gamble?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Any questions? Counsel Johnson?
I wanted to note that it does mean that the remaining part of the appropriation is getting a little slim. There's still going to be the matter of contracting the actual installation, which apparently requires a specialist. So there's some concern about us maybe having to come back for a little bit more. But in my opinion, it's, it's going to be well worth the investment, even if we have to bump it up a little bit down the road. We're going to get people from all over the valley. In fact, really from much of the east side, since there aren't going to be very many parks with these kinds of assets. So I think we'll make that back in, in visitations from both the community and outside the community. And one other thing was, I, I think that the reason that we pulled this off was in part just because this is good news that this project's moving forward. I know it's something that everyone in the community is really excited about.
I agree. Counsel, any other discussion? Get online. Let's see. Counsel Mayhew's hands up. Okay. Okay.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Alright, passes unanimously. To purchase, purchase order with landscape structures for Centennial Fields Inclusive Play Park Equipment. Is there any further report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
None.
Alright, moving on to next community report is Finance Administration. AB 23-037, Agreement for Consultant Services, IT Management Operations and Staffing Assessment. I believe Counsel Watten, would you please read the summary and motion?
Thank you. The purpose of this agenda bill is for the city council consideration and approval of the agreement between Berry Dunn and the city of Snoqualmie for the IT Management Operations and Staffing Assessment. I move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for consultant services with Berry Dunn for IT Management Operations and Staffing Assessment not to exceed $58,735.
Second, moved by Counsel Watten and seconded by Counsel Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? I'm looking online to see if anyone has, if so, please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone online raise their hands, nor anyone in city hall. Chair, did you want to, or interim chair, Watten, did you want to introduce this or?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to hear from Sarah Reader?
I will, I will defer to them in a moment. Let me just give some background. The reason why this was not on consent, consent agreement is that we had some concerns raised in our committee and I just want to make sure that we, we do address those. We've struggled for the last year with the IT department. It came to light in the salary survey that we didn't have enough data points through that to fully address some of the needs. But it's also a combination of the process of selecting an IT director. It came to light that there's other needs in the IT department too, that Berry Dunn can address at the same time. And I think it's really a critical point for us to make the investment. I, I think some of the concern from the committee is this, that if we have a new director, are we going to hamstring that new director with decisions moving forward? And we were assured from the consultants that what this does is give the new IT director a baseline. And their suggestion is that the new director be in place for 60 days and use this information not to preclude the new director from making their own choices. But at least gives them a greater sense of what needs to be accomplished. And in the scope of it, the IT department has nine employees slated. We have one position that has not been filled for over a, for nearly a year. So we have the adequate money in the budget for this. But at the same time, the consultants can be doing a lot of the legwork while that director is being chosen. So that when they, they arrive at city hall, they can hit the ground running. And so I, I would like to defer to the finance team for any questions, any hardball questions.
So I don't know if counsel does have any questions. One thing I would say is, as important it is, is to give the new IT director information. Right now, it's important to give leadership in the city the same information in making this hiring decision. One of the biggest things is knowing what we need to hire in order to fill in what the gaps are today. And that is a gap even, I mean, IT is IT. Not everyone is an expert. But being able to give our leadership the tools to hire the right person to know what gaps they're going to need to fill will be just as beneficial.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seen the vote? Any opposed? Nay? Hearing none. So the, the agreement with Berry Dunn for IT Management Operations and Staffing Assessment passes unanimously. Great. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next item is mayor's report. So several different things going on. First of all, this reminder that next week on March 22nd is Snoqualmie will host the Snoqualmie Valley Government Association. So that's all local council members and mayors, along with other districts such as school districts, hospital and others will be joining us. And we will hear from several different speakers. One will be CEO Renee Jensen from Snoqualmie Valley Health. We will hear from John Wilson, the King County Assessor on Assessments and Property Taxes. And then we'll hear from Brandy Delange from AWSC on legislative updates and then possibly also as well from state legislatures and our King County Council, council member. So, so far only two council members have up, have RSVP'd and we're the hosts. So hopefully we get these other additional council members there.
And I.
Yeah.
And so you can let City Clerk Dean, just, you know, wave at her and she'll sign you up.
I think I can, it's next, it's Thursday next week, right?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Darn. Oh, what time? Sorry.
6:30. And it's local.
If you're feeling.
Counsel Johnson?
Okay. Isn't that pretty much around the same time that fire is having a meeting about working batteries?
That's this Wednesday.
That's this Wednesday.
And I'll get to that in a minute.
Yeah, I had a funny feeling.
Was that a, was it a hand? You're volunteering and saying yes?
No.
Please strongly consider it and let her, City Clerk Dean know. That would be great. I will be making a presentation to the school board next Thursday. And it's just going to be an overview of the community center expansion and pool project. Just reminder, next Thursday and Friday, or excuse me, Friday and Saturday, there's like, everything's happening next week. Next Friday and Saturday is the city council retreat. Applications for city council position number five, these are due tomorrow. And we have council candidate interviews during regular council meeting on March 27th. And council vote and oath of office during council meeting on April 10th. So by April 10th, we should have a new council member. Regarding the fire you just talked about, fire crews responded to a house fire on Knight Avenue three separate times. It was the same house, three separate times in a little over, it's like five days, three days. The first two fires occurred in the garage and the third occurred outside, but immediately in front of the garage door. And the cause of these three fires believed to be two separate sets of lithium ion batteries used in lawn maintenance tools. So the city is going to be hosting a community meeting this Wednesday at, I guess, the YMCA. Starting at 7:00 PM, correct, 7:00 PM. To discuss these fires and answer any questions that the community may have. And also provide some safety information on lithium battery, ion batteries. Because they are in lots of things and you keep them plugged in your garage. And so there'll be some safety information to be coming forward on that. So I believe it's also going to be on Facebook Live and so you can watch it online as well. Legislative session continues, so please continue to talk to your legislatures about our council, council legislative priorities, which includes requesting state funding for community center expansion and pool. And then also ensuring that they fund during this session, state route 18 widening. Making sure it's in the, this biennial budget rather than getting completed in, in six years. And finally, I'm going to mention again, Meadowbrook, the ILA is going to expire this spring after 25 years. And so the cities in North Bend, Snoqualmie, we have been meeting together to kind of rethink the structure. And, and we're looking at including Snoqualmie Tribe as a third member. As a governing board. And so in Si View Parks, they already handle a lot of the events reservations and perform a lot of the minimum maintenance. And so they would continue to do that. So watch for a draft ILA coming in the future to probably FNA and then to council. So. That is all I have for now. Do you have any questions? Seeing none, none online or here. Okay. Next item, item is the Commission Liaison Reports. Do we have any Commission Liaison Reports? From our council members? Counsel Christensen?
I attended the YMCA board meeting last week. We had a great presentation from Director Chambliss regarding the improvements at the community park, including the splash pad. And the Y is still continuing its annual fund drive. I think they've raised about 15,000 or $20,000 out of 45. So it's a great time to contribute to the Y to the extent that you would like to help support their programs.
Any other updates? I do see, Counsel Mayhew?
Yes. So just wanted to mention as the.
Yes, so just wanted to mention, as the council liaison to the tribe, to tribal council, rather, that as many of you know, you know, over the past years, we always haven't always had the best relationship with the tribe. I think city councils hope for a better relationship, I think that the tribe has as well. The, the mayor has done just a fantastic job since she's come into office of really trying to improve that relationship, reaching out to them, talking about matters of, you know, of joint interest. And I would just give the observation that I think, it appears to me that the relationship between the city and the tribe continues to improve. I had the opportunity to attend with the mayor a meeting with tribal representative to the city, talking about some of the future services. I won't say much about it, other than to say we discussed the tribe's interest in exploring with us police services that might be provided, fire services that might be provided, and, you know, at the casino as well as at the areas that have gone from, you know, feet, or that they've applied to go from feet of trust. So there were great conversations, the mayor, I think, and this administration doing a great job of advancing those discussions and that relationship. And so I would just report to the council that, that seems to be well on track.
Thanks, thank you, Councilor Mayhew. You've also been instrumental in helping with the relationship as well, so thank you. Any other commission or committee liaison reports? Councilor Watten?
First of all, echoing the mayor's comments, today was the Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Board meeting, which I'm liaison to as well. And we're working closely with, making sure that the tribe's voice is, is heard in a way so that it's respectful to their presence here in the valley. And there's going to be some other follow-up meetings on that with the city of North Bend. So good work, yes. The, the relations are improving tremendously with the tribe, and, and thanks to both council member Mayhew and, and the mayor's efforts there. The next one is the King County Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. The meeting is, the next meeting is going to be the 23rd of March. It's at 7:30 in the morning, if you want to join us. This month, we get to present on mental or behavioral health with our specialists, Stephanie Butler and Police Chief Phipps. We get half an hour out of the hour and a half of the meeting, and it gets rotated around between the different SCA cities. And nobody stepped up, and I said, well, wait a moment, since I know nothing about law, safety, and justice, and I'm in this training program apparently that I signed up for, but it's always good to be surrounded by great people like our police chief and, and Officer Butler. And again, you know, being able to be in these regional meetings is helpful for us because we get to learn from each other what works in other cities. And, and albeit we happen to be one of the smaller cities, we just have to scale things down to make it reasonable, but we can, we can definitely learn from them. So if you want to join, I will send you the link.
And that one is Thursday.
That is a Thursday, yes, you're correct. 7:30 in the morning, 7:30 to nine is a great way to start the day.
Is that here?
It's remote, it's Zoom, yes.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Any other updates? Right, so next agenda item is department reports, and City Minister Sarwine, would you please give us a council summary for February?
Well, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. As always, I really encourage you to read through the reports for yourself. I'm just going to hit a few highlights, starting with the Communications Division. I just note that we have a very high rate of opening on our e-news when we send it out, which is good. It means people are actually reading the information that we send to them. Our rate of opening is 54%, and for any peer newsletters from other cities, it's more like 40%. So our citizens are actually hearing what we're having to say, and, you know, I think we're getting through. As far as engagement and event support, I would just note that, you know, we have a number of things, of informational publications that we're sending out, but we provide a lot of awareness about our new speed limits. And also, I have to say, as, as a hardcore fan of The X-Files, we have nothing to the fans of Twin Peaks. The Twin Peaks days, I think, was very successful, and there are some very rabid fans of that television show that, that came to visit the city. Under community development, just quickly note, there are a number of projects that are currently under development. The Timber Trails Platte, which is a mixed-use housing development of duplexes and townhouses. The Model Train Museum, the Rails, which is a small 11-unit apartment complex. The Snoqualmie Ridge self-storage is in the process of expanding. And of course, the, the big one, the Comprehensive Plan, continues to move forward with a number of different, you know, sub-projects underneath. For the Finance and Human Resources Department, I just noticed that our, that our Tyler Minnis ERP project is continuing to actually reach the point of, of where we're actually starting to implement things with the base financial modules, the general ledger, the accounts payable, and the bank, and the bank reconciliation, and also the cash sharing purchasing and purchasing card program. So we're actually moving to the point where we're going to be implementing, rather than just discussing the projects. And a huge shout out and thank you to Sarah, who is the guru of all things ERP. Thank you very much for all your hard work. And of course, as we always do every spring, the annual audit, this year for the audit for 2021 is well underway. In our fire department, just want to highlight some of the notable training events. They've been onboarding two new career firefighters and planning for driver training program for volunteer, and the integration with the South King County Fire and Training Consortium. And we have six instructors who've just recertified as EMS instructors. I don't think people realize this, but there's a lot of EMS training and the instructors do throughout the community. So thank you to our fire department. In Public Works, talk a little bit about the Riverview Park. Unfortunately, we had to repair some vandalism that occurred, and also do some plumbing repairs. But on a positive note, the playground's moving along great. If you go over there, you'll see all these posts sticking up in the air, and they're in the process of putting all the things that attach to all the posters sticking up in the air. Our Fleet Division is doing, I'll call it post-snow, snow season work. All of those vehicles that went out and did the snow plowing now have to get repaired and upgraded and ready for next year. And finally, under Public Works, and just note that our CIP manager position, Dylan has filled, has started to work forward on putting together basically a big spreadsheet, which will show the council and the community where we are in all of our CIP projects. And they're also working with our folks in our Communications Division. We're hoping to be able to get that kind of information up on the website. And also included in the Public Works report, a picture's worth a thousand words. Mike put in a great picture showing what a storm pond looked like before they went out and cleaned it up and afterwards, and it's kind of extraordinary. And finally, from the Police Department, just a couple items of importance. We have three openings, and we have one officer recruit who's currently in the academy. One officer recruit will be starting the academy March 21st, and we just hired a new entry, entry level officer who started February 14th, and they've been registered for the academy in the future. So again, kudos to the chief for refilling the ranks in our police department. He's done a phenomenal job in the last couple of years getting our department up to stuff. And that, that would conclude my report. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Not seeing. Councilor Watten?
Okay, I'm just kind of curious, because three plus three equals three. Three openings, are there, were these three that were open that have now been filled? Or we still have three more to fill after this?
We still have three.
Okay, okay, 50% there, kind of.
Still working on it. We're going to get there.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we do have an executive session pursuant to RCW42.30.1101. Aye, little aye, and little i, to discuss litigation that has been specifically threatened to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. We expect this to last about 15 minutes, and participants would include our Finance and HR Director Ferguson, City Minister Sarwine, and City Attorney Sterbank. And we do have a Zoom link online that has been sent out to everyone's email. We do expect action following, so we will come back to our original meeting. And we wish to go upstairs. Is that probably going to be the best option? Or you stay down here? Stay down here. So then we'll need IT presence following to get us back up onto the regular meeting.
Can we do Zoom link upstairs?
We can, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, upstairs.
Make sure that this got forwarded to Jen.
Okay, so I guess we will step upstairs and get a line, so Councilor Mayhew and our Finance Director Ferguson can join us. And so we'll recess in about, for five minutes, head upstairs, and the whole thing should take about 15 minutes, and so we should be done approximately about 8:42, at the latest.
8:42?
Is that?
8:42. Okay. I'll see upstairs.
Jen, I just forwarded the Zoom link to you.
It was like, yeah, and then. So I get to that this.
Upstairs, let's see if we can get our channel over.
I'm afraid you had to...